All right, guys.
Recording in progress.
Today is June eighteenth, it's five thirty four on my watch, five thirty seven up here. Um, we are calling this meeting, I believe it was Councilman Tom Wensel that wanted to do a charter revision. Um, uh, study session. And it was on the top of our schedule, but because we were in so many different meetings for budget hearing, which we worked diligently as this body worked diligently. Um, we had no time of doing any other meeting and I gave Councilman Wensel my word that we would have this meeting. George reminded me about it, so thank you to George on that. Thank you, Councilman Wensel for bringing this and running this here. Um, and I just want everybody to know this is not a regular meeting, just a quick study session. What the charter revision uh potentially would be would be us, uh, I believe, working with the administration. Asking the administration to put forward dates when this needs to go on in front of the ballot. Hopefully we can get this so that uh residents can uh potentially run to be on a charter revision uh committee. Um, I know we've had extensive conversation that the the clerk Lencina, Madam Clerk Lencina has sent us some information. Uh, with some time dates. We are still uh uh in a time where we can still get this on the ballot so that we can have potentially nine candidates run for this charter revision committee. Uh, so that we as a city uh can have a updated and more uh charter that's in the twenty first century. Nothing against uh Councilman Constance's father for one of the first to do so.
You you not to interrupt you, Council Chair, but you mean not a charter revision, but a charter commission.
Charter commission, correct.
Draft possibly draft a new charter.
Correct, absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Constance, for that one. Um, I'm gonna start this off. I I was hoping that the clerk was gonna be here with us, uh, but I know that she's in training. Um, maybe I can have Councilman uh Wensel speak up a little bit about what his expectations are. Maybe we can hear a little bit from the administration on uh what steps we have taken already, what steps that you guys are gonna continue to take. And uh, maybe we have to have a couple of more of these to make to ensure that this is going to be on the twenty twenty five ballot. I know first to the time that we talked about, do we have a primary? Do we have a general? Do we just bring it towards uh uh the twen- the next election so that the taxpayers are not feeling this and we're not charging them close to seventy five thousand dollars? Do we say, you know what, just do a special election and figure it out? Uh, this is what this is all about to have, uh, just some discussion. Councilman Wensel, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, th- thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, basically, when I brought this up, you know, months ago, we we had time to get it on the twenty twenty four election. Number twenty twenty four. I'm not sure about the timeframe. I don't have that with me. That's still possible. I know we talked about it one of the meetings and it was that'd be pretty tight with campaigning and. So I I I maybe George, can you tell us about people getting their name on the ballot? Do you know anything about the timeframe for that? For this, no, you know?
So Councilman, I I so I had a this uh quick brief discussion with Madam Clerk. Um, being that we want it on twenty twenty four is just not enough. I think what ultimately, it it just makes sense, right? There's an election that's coming up in the next year and a half. There's a mayoral race, there's a city council race, and then you can add this charter race as well. And so ultimately, what this charter race would allow is nine spots. Four for city council, one for the mayor, one for the clerk, one for the treasurer, nine for the charter. And you you ultimately allow everybody to take part in the same exact election. That way it's operated through the city and it's operated through Wayne County. Um, and then it's obviously registered to the state.
Yeah, the only the only bad thing about that is is the before anything could be put down on paper or documented, i- it's two years from now.
Not. By by next November, you'll have somebody else on it.
Next November, but they don't take, they wouldn't take office till January first. And then January first, and then you gotta get things going.
Well, you you give you give them a four year, it's a four year term.
I know, but I'm saying you they're elected in uh twenty five, twenty twenty five November.
They have until twenty twenty nine.
And they 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 take office on uh January first of twenty twenty six.
Yeah, I mean.
And then they then once they start meeting.
No, they take office January twenty five.
No.
January first of twenty twenty five.
No, January first of twenty twenty six.
January first of twenty twenty six.
That's almost two years we we gotta wait to do anything. I mean, that's why I I pursued this months ago. You know, that's why I I was very adamant about, you know, just getting something going on it because it's it's a thing of a thing that you know some do overnight. So I mean, we got, it is what it is, and I and if if you heard that we, it's too late to do anything for this year, and I don't know if anyone else could speak up on it. And then so be it. That's what we have to do, but I I sure would like to have something.
But I want you to know, e- even even if we wanted to do it, right? We wanna make sure that we do it right, like like sometimes fast always and and I'm not trying to take away like, carry up, let's get the ball on, but sometimes fast isn't always the right answer. And so to me, it's like, you wanna make sure that, you know, nobody puts any barriers before us, because you know what's gonna happen around town, our councilman. Someone's gonna come back and say, oh, no, we don't need this. It's gonna cost the taxpayers, and some type of barrier is gonna s- blow up right in front of us, and I already know it.
Yeah, not 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 to say anything bad about anybody or negative, but that's why months and months ago I s- put this out there so we wouldn't be rushing. You know, I mean, actually, probably a year ago, I mentioned this.
Actually, the resolution was passed by Councilor back in December eighteen, two thousand twenty three.
About twenty three, you know, so I mean, that's. Yeah, I mean, I don't. I wish we had someone here that could speak on it, but I mean, I, there's a, there's a uh charter review committee, which this is about. And there's a you, there's a charter, there's actual things called charter amendments. But you can, you can amend the charter this year.
Yeah, we're Roger.
Council Chair, I I don't know.
Are you speaking on behalf of the administration, sir?
I am, Council Chair, as well as a reference to, I don't know, Mr. Wensel, if he's hinting at something towards me or not, but I I would just, I would just say that I know you, when we looked at it um last year and I put the memos to the board, I think one thing we're looking, you need a sixty day timeframe before to get it to the Attorney General's Office before he's uh the primary. Um, and then the language I think we're gonna put first is do we, do you want yes or no to have a charter revision, uh, sorry, a charter um committee? Look at revising the charter, then the voters will take a vote on it. And then you can go to the next stage. Um, I think the Amphamic did it last year. I watched what they put together. Um, and they got it on the ballot in November. We did it, last time we did it was two thousand and seven. If there's something before then, I don't know, but that was what we looked at in terms of the um the service contract supplies and demands in um uh eighteen point nine and eighteen point two. So we can, I can pull it out and resend it to you. I think what what happened in April uh to me, I think things were sort of put on hold, but I think we can restart it. And I I agree with you, this is something we don't wanna rush, but it's something that we need to think through and put together properly.
Are you saying right now that we have to have uh which I believe you stand correct, you do have to have the options for the voters to vote yes or no if you want it. And then you can get, so you're, so there might still have to be.
Councilman, a special election.
Um. Well, yeah, I mean, if if you go ahead and go with the Charter Review Commission, I mean, which is ultimately our ultimate goal. But if there was some issues that that we need to change, which I I I'm not gonna bring anything up right now, but change this year, that that would would have been possible, but I don't know if those have to go through the Attorney General or not, that's a revision, charter review revision uh revision? I don't know if they have to go through the Attorney General or not.
Council Chair.
Yeah, Councilman.
We don't change the, we can't change the charter. We have to elect a commission first. Then the charter commission does whatever. So first we have to go to the voters and say, you know, do you do you want to elect a charter commission? As far as any language, I think what Councilman Wensel's talking about is so we eventually come up with some proposed language, we send it to the Attorney General. They okay it, and then we put it on the ballot. We're we're a little ways away from that step, but.
I got a question for you, Councilman. Could we maybe as a body here adopt a commission, a Charter Review Commission? Right, without having to go to the ballot and put them here and and allow this commission to be the one to uh uh start this.
Recommend, I believe, and I would defer to our Roger, uh, you know, we can recommend changes to the charter, like when we took the libraries out of the recreation department and so forth. But if we're talking about electing a charter commission to draft a whole new charter, and I think that's what we're talking about, then the first step is to elect the charter commissioners. A former, so if you're talking about revising the charter, then yes, I believe so.
Yeah, you can't, I don't think you can pick people to do it both ways, uh, uh, sorry, by your, by yourselves. I could just resend you the materials we had when we researched it. I did meet with the Attorney General's Office. I did talk to several cities that did it.
Did you share any of that information with us when you met with them?
I sent it out. I'll resend it again.
When did you meet with them?
I got it.
I sent it back in October uh s- uh December. And I'll resend it again. I think we talked about it when we had the last study session. And I quoted from it verbally that I had in writing, but I have no problem getting back up to you.
But you met with the Attorney General's Department, is what you're saying?
On the phone, we talked with the, yeah, several departments and the office.
And it was, it was directly towards this commission?
Yes, yes, the process, the procedures, what to follow, where to send the paperwork. I looked at the two thousand and seven because we we passed the First Amendment on the uh supplies and the ordinance, uh, on the charter change. We did not send it to the AG's office for final approval, because I was looking at the Act Seventy Eight. And we were researching with um with the archives to see if they could find the Act Seventy Eight approval. It was voted on, but the approval by the AG was not found. We had the same problem in two thousand and seven. Gary went back after a year and they ref- refixed it.
X X Seventy Eight's been around, Roger. I I know, I know you push back. X Seventy Eight is here to protect the police and fire. And I know that you guys wanna, you know, take a look at X Seventy Eight and just continue to, hang on one second. I know we wanna continue to take X Seventy Eight and try to hijack it. We need to understand that that this is put there to avoid nepotism. And so like, you know, we continue to question if X Seventy Eight, there's newspapers. For God's sake, the new Detroit newspaper spoke about Dearborn Heights enacting and enrolling in the passing Act Seventy Eight. Fourteen thousand people voted on it. That's as many people as voted in this last election for us, less. Council Chair.
What I was saying, Council Chair, I hadn't, I hadn't finished was that how the Act Seventy Eight, we looked, I was researching the Act Seventy Eight.
About the Act Seventy Eight.
In doing that, in doing that research, then we looked at the two thousand and seven or uh amendment to the charter, what happened there? Um, the one that happened in two thousand and seven, it was a year before Gary corrected, which he did with the Attorney General's Office, although it was voted on and there were newspaper articles. It was not valid until the Attorney General's Office had given a review and the approval so it could enter into the office to great seal. Um, and then that was recorded with the archives.
Did I, did we just have a lawsuit which we can go into depth with it that that basically stated that X Seventy Eight uh was in favor?
Well, actually, you had a a recall petition that you lost in this, in the um.
I didn't lose anything. I didn't have nothing to do with that.
Whoever filed it lost. It was appealed to the Circuit Court and and lost.
Yeah.
Then you came out with the rest.
By the way, I just wanna state for the record.
But but the Act Seventy Eight is in the contracts that the the all the police officers signed. It's in the contract. The commission runs.
I I just wanna make something very clear. You said that uh you, as in myself, I had nothing to do with anything of recalling the mayor and and bringing that in front of that, and so let's make that very clear. So I I will, you stand incorrect there. I had nothing to do with that.
Council Chair.
Use your name?
You did, you said you.
Did I say your name?
You said you.
You could mean a lot of people. You could mean the reference to council. You could mean someone outside.
Point of order.
Please, one forty, you asked me a question.
Not Roger, point of order. Another thing I must say here, but. This is about the charter review.
Council Chair. I'll do respect to Councilman Constance. That's not what I was referring to. I mean, what I I what I was referring to is you can do a budget amendment without having the committee approved by the voters. You you could do a budget amendment. It just has to go on the on the ballot.
You mean a charter amendment?
A charter amendment, yes, I'm I'm sorry, a charter amendment. Thank you. Uh, so that that just has, I mean, the charter revision commission, that's a whole different story. But and it was, it was just said just a minute ago that can we get a a committee ahead? You know, six months ago, I said that. That's one of my suggestions. Let's get a committee started right now. Start the process and let them start looking into how the Charter uh Review Commission could be established. And that was, well, what do the, hold your horses there, Tom, you know, we got time. And so look what happened. Now we don't have time. But that's what I wanted to start a com- a a.
Who told you, hold your horses?
Everybody did. No one, no one accepted it. I I put it out there and no one voted for it. It was, I I put it out there.
I don't recall, but.
I did. I said, I said, let's, let's get this ball rolling right now and and it was about, and Rachel was out there and she said, if I'm on this committee, can I also run for the the Charter Review Committee? And we said, well, yeah, probably could do that, but it never, nothing ever materialized. But i- is if a charter amendment, you can do that anytime without having a voter approval until it's on the ballot for the voters to. You can come up with the the language to amend the charter in any way you want, have the voters vote on it the next, at the next general election. But I mean, I, this this meeting right now, I don't think we have the the answers that we, I mean, what are we gonna do at this meeting? Are we gonna start the process?
I mean, you know, in order to to have the discussion without violating the open community act, you have a study session, so I'm I'm making sure that.
Yeah, I got you.
We're doing that. I don't know. I mean, that's a great question. Sir, on behalf of the administration, are you guys gonna start the process on this for us?
Yes, I will start the process. I'll get you an outline and a brief on it. Thank you, Council Chair.
Welcome. We we got, Council Chair.
Yeah.
We got the handouts from um Michigan Municipal League about, you know, so I think what Councilman Wensel's talking about is suggesting uh some revisions to our present charter. And then getting ballot language and putting that on the ballot, that that we can still do. As opposed to like Dearborn is, they're still in the process, I believe, of of um drafting new charter and having everybody in the city vote for it. To approve it or not.
Any other questions?
Council Chair. Councilman, I think we had the talk back in February uh six. And I think we talked about it. We instructed the corp council back then to start it, to start uh the research about it, and I see an email here from Madam Clerk Lencina uh to a corp council back then, Mr. Farina, about uh to have to start to start the research and and I think we uh we had a study session back then too about it. That's when Councilman Wensel mentioned the review. Uh. I'm looking, there's a reply from Mr. Farina says, I'm looking at our at our city charter and in reviewing this the charter revision process with the Chief of State Operation Division at the Attorney General's Office, George uh Elworth, and reaching out to Lansing City Attorney James Simka's office. I think we need a little time to organize ourselves to place on a ballot that question, do you support a charter revision? Lansing is going through this process now, and I wanted more time to pick their brains. Did you have anything after that?
Your your microphone, sir.
Oh, I turned it off. Sorry about that, sir. Uh, um, Council Chair, I had asked Lynn to send me, I went into her office and we, I was trying to get a copy of the timelines and because she was putting the elections together. So in response, she sent me that email. Um, and then we ran into what happened in April. I couldn't talk or things like that. So um, but I have it already and I prepared it. In fact, for your knowledge, I've I've prepared the um the um Airbnb and um short term rentals ordinance. I've prepared the Blight ordinance. I will get those to you, um, and I will work on this for you that you've asked for from the last meeting. I tried to follow up with everything you asked me and have it ready. But I approached Lynn to try and.
This is what's back in February, but so where we stand right now, so what's the next step?
We have the whole format. We have the formula. We've, um, I I, like I said, I took um uh Amphamics. Once I did two last year to put on the ballot. I went back and looked at ones when we did the amendment in two thousand and seven. Um, uh, so the procurement ordinance uh and charter um revision. So I will redo it, get it to you, and then you can look at it. I just needed her to.
Just for me to understand, do we have to send to the ballot asking residents that they support a charter revision?
Yeah, you have to put on for yes or no, and then the vote on.
Are we able to send it for this election?
I don't think we'll have the time, but I can che- double check and see.
At least for November?
I'll I'll check and see. I thought it had to be for the primary, but I'll double check and see.
Okay, I just also wanna let you know um on April eleventh, twenty twenty four, at eleven forty two P M. Good morning. A request below is the link to the state August and November twenty twenty four election dates. This was sent to you from uh Madam Clerk Lencina. So on April eleventh, you did receive those uh and and I'm looking at the email here.
See that? I asked for it.
Yeah.
She did send it to me.
Okay.
But, you know.
So just get us an update, because I know that you got it on April eleventh. We're we're now in June.
Well, we had some problems. I couldn't talk. And Mr. Miyaki incorrectly used fifteen point five to try to uh to to get me out of my off my position. But I will follow up.
I think that was Councilman Ahmad.
I will follow up. I will follow up with it as you asked and and get it to you, sir.
Council Chair.
Uh, Councilman uh Constance.
And just quickly, I thought we did elect uh three members. I think it was myself, Councilman Wensel, and possibly uh Councilwoman Denise Maxwell as far as being on the you know, to come up with language to put on the ballot. I don't know if that's your memory of the situation or not.
What?
I say I thought we elected three members, myself, Councilman Wensel, and then Councilwoman Denise Maxwell. It's for a charter revision uh committee.
I I remember. I remember. I think it was you and uh Councilman Wensel. And uh Councilwoman Manalas, I remember that.
Council Chair. Chair.
Yeah.
Um, I I don't think it would, we were elected. I think it was mentioned that the three of us would do that, and I think what rest of my recollection is that uh um, we were supposed to get together with the Corporation Council for some further action. That never happens. Council Chair, we don't know, you know, I'd like to say I know a lot about everything, but I don't, especially something of this matter here. I mean, that's why, you know, so many times in the last couple of years, I've stated, you know, we're trying to get something going. Let's get it going now, because before you know it, time's gonna run out, the budget's gonna be due. Let's get going on, you know, this uh things on the ballot that are gonna be due. Let's get going on it, because I know you just, you you don't, you don't propose it today and it happens tomorrow. That's for sure, not around here. And uh, so I mean, that's, I mean, I I was hoping I'm, you know, when we were suggested of being on the city council part of this, that we'd be contacted on something from the administration, and we never were. I, at least I wasn't. I don't know about the other two.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Yeah, and just to dovetail on what Councilman Wensel said, so if we're talking about a charter revision, then there's certain big issues. Our former government, are we gonna have a strong mayor? Uh, or weak mayor, city manager, former government, for example, the threshold for approving uh spending uh under which the council doesn't have to approve Act Seventy Eight and so on and so forth. You you know, we've been talking about this on the council for over ten years. Um, Marky Van Houten and I, and I think Councilwoman Janet Badalo worked on making the charter gen- uh uh gender neutral. And there were a couple of other things. So if if we're talking about. And there were a couple of other things. So if if we're talking about revisions to the charter, which can happen a lot quicker. Um and I think that's what Councilman Wenzel has in mind. I mean, I. Have the materials I got from uh Roger and the 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 question is what. Uh revisions are we gonna wanna put on the ballot? If we put a whole new, basically a whole new charter. Uh I don't think that's gonna fly with the voters, just like. When they first put the proposal to take. The our libraries out of the Recreation Department and fail. Because I think the voters thought they were. Creating another department spending more money. But that's all I have to say about that.
I mean, I'm gonna open this up to the residents too, if you wanna engage. Councilwoman.
Could we do a request for proposals that we start working on this close case and maybe make it in time for November?
I'd like to see it on August.
It's late for August. It's like six, seven weeks.
I'm uh please. Shabdo Hack. George, do you have any on Zoom? I believe we have one.
Good evening, everyone. This is a very important issue. I pushed for it for a long time. Since nineteen, I mean, two thousand, probably eighteen or seventeen. And I hope the Chair will allow me to ask a few questions of. Uh okay, thank you. Um. I have a question and I'm going to ask it through you, uh Council Chair. If you can ask uh Mister Roger. If we need to do just amendment. Can the city council? Or the mayor write any amendment and put it on the ballot? You know, going through the process, going to the general attorney for approval. Can that be done?
In answer of council's commission.
Charter revision done via commission, and there's a charter amendment via council.
Okay, so the council can do amendments and put them on the ballot after the general attorney approves it. Now, the second question. Does the charter prevent the city council from passing ordinance or resolution to create? Uh elected commission by the voters to review the charter? Is there anything legally, state level or city level, prevent us from doing this?
It depends what your the purpose of the committee is. Is if it's to make recommendations on the charter, the problem becomes. Uh transparency. And if everyone has had a chance, that's why you put the names on the ballot. Give the city, the citizens of the city an opportunity to participate in something so um so i- important. As opposed to a small group, not that it would be a bad group, but a small group. So that's why the names are put on the ballot, so everyone has a chance. Um to to try and and have their input. As opposed to um picking a group to with a with a purpose and people saying, well, that wasn't fair. Why didn't we have a chance to get on there? You're putting language and stuff. That's what I recently, when I when I spoke with the A G and we went through the process. And your language you put on the ballot is reviewed by the Attorney General's Office, make sure it's fair. And before the people can vote on it. So. People on the other side say, well, no, that language wasn't fair for me, and we don't agree with that language, but you still put it on the ballot. That's, I think, a process.
I'm I'm trying to talk about the the beginning of the process. Can the city council pass a resolution to put on the ballot? In November, the the election of. Nine members to review the charter of the city. Without going to the voters and asking if they would approve it or not. Is there anything state level or city level?
By by your charter, your committees that you create have to be from board members. I looked at the po- the policy and procedure manual as well. The committees you set up have to consist of board members, not outside personnel. That's what I read. When I looked at it. And then you're asking that committee that o- outside people to come together. That's that's not permitted by the pop procedures manual. And then you're asking them to look at changing a charter. And as I said early in October, you can't change an ordinance to change a charter. So that's still my my um position. But I will look at it for you to make sure, because what you say always has weight, and I respect you tremendously, sir. I will look at it for you.
I'm just asking if for the to speed this process, if that is possible. If our council can just tomorrow pass a resolution in a regular meeting, asking, you know. The people to put their names on November ballot to elect nine members to review the charter. And the reason I'm asking this, because at the end of the day, when the charter is reviewed, it has to go in front of the public for. For approval or not to be approved. So at the at the end of the day, the 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 people. The resident of the city going to approve or disapprove the charter. For just the speed of the process, because this has been going on. For a long time, and I have a feeling that that, you know, to be blunt, the administration doesn't wanna do it. And I'm not hiding that uh at all. So I want to know legally. Can we do it through the council? Or we have to go put some kind of language in November, asking the public, do you want to approve? Creation of a a board or you don't?
You're you're skipping the process. Council Chair's permission of the people who are selected to to do that. That process is as important as what you put together, the language for the ballot. The transparency and the openness availability.
You wanna allow a charter commission? Yeah, the voters vote yes or no. They vote yes, and then you can allow for people to go out, put poll the petition. Get the signatures or pay for the signature. And and to be able to get to to run for these seats. And this commission ultimately will dictate what happens in the administration and the led- or the executive branch and the legislative branch. So these nine will basically determine. What happens between these two different uh entities? So I believe that those are the steps. And the worst thing I would hate to happen is a council says, well, you know, we're gonna bypass that step. And then. Can I say somebody on this council says, you know what? Uh I don't like that they did that. They take it to court. The court overrules and says you you missed the step. And then you you gotta kick all nine off the ballot.
Good, good example.
I do understand that and I respect that. I'm just trying to see if there is any speedy process, because this has been going on for a long time.
Really, we can get it on the ballot for.
There are lots of things in the charter need urgently to be changed. There are lots of things I would like to see changed for basically, like you said. Stop the nepotism, stop anything, you know, we feel that is not transparent. And this is since nineteen sixty three.
You can do a great job on that.
Okay, I I don't know if I wanna be on it, but I'll be happy, you know, to assist. Uh the issue is, I think it is due and it has to be done. And enough wasting time, because we deserve better charter than what we have. And for Mister Roger, I did, I did file the petition to recall the mayor for Act seventy eight. Nobody else, I'm responsible for it. And out of respect to lots of people, I did not follow up on it to the Supreme Court. Thank you.
Uh I know we have uh three, one, three. Member uh asked to speak. Was he unmuted? Go ahead.
Uh yes, uh Gary Miyaki, um. Special legal counsel to the city council. Um, you know, I was just kind of watching out of curiosity and I've noticed there is some confusion. With respect to this and I.
You raise your voice just a little?
Oh, sure. Sorry about that, Council Chair. Um I've noticed that there is some uh concern um with respect to the process. Um. You know, when it comes to a charter revision. You actually need to end up uh adopting. Um a resolution to do this. Uh the Michigan Municipal League has uh forms for this purpose. I mean, to be frank. It could take maybe a grand total of fifteen minutes. For uh someone to put together the form. To uh put a charter revision uh commission on the ballot. You need to be mindful, however. Um and this is my understanding of the process, which I have not looked into in quite some time. But that essentially you are supposed to have an election both to. Uh choose the charter revision commission members. As well as to make a determination whether or not there will end up being. Um uh the need for this. So I mean, in essence. Uh it's not like your typical situation where you might sit there and say, hey, we need to end up determining whether or not. We wanna have a charter revision and then we're gonna end up having an election for a commission. Or even a primary. It is an at large election done at one time. And uh it's usually done uh like the city of Dearborn did it. Uh just because of certain timing issues that are very bizarre. Um that make it difficult to try to separate out the election of a commission. Uh from the uh decision to end up having a commission. So um you know, that is a a quick take. Um because I'm not quite sure that you were um uh exactly. Being informed of that and as Mister Abdalhak had ended up uh indicating. You know, this was an issue that came up. In February, I believe. And, you know, there's a concern in my role. That whether or not things have happened, uh they have not happened because. Someone is not trying to get it done. So um uh that is why I feel is necessary for me to end up. Uh making a comment on this particular issue. There's any any other questions that anyone leaves would. Fall within my role, I'd be happy to answer them, but if not, uh then I would be inclined to leave the meeting.
Council Chair, uh Councilman Constan. Yeah, and uh thank you for that, uh Gary Miyaki. And so. There's, am I correct? We're talking about two different animals. Either one is electing a a commission. To do to draft a whole new charter or. Uh having a, you know, proposed uh changes to the charter. Like when when Janet Badalo, Margie and I, we talked about making the. Charter gender neutral and some of those other things. Is that? Uh or or could you outline briefly the the, you know, the different steps we could take?
Close a little, a little different than that.
Is this uh counsel? Is this legal advice? Because the special counsel is not authorized for the charter. I just wanna put that on the record. And if he's giving legal advice again, it's against the charter and.
Question was asked by Councilman Constan.
I'm just.
Thank you.
I would I would note that there there is no. Corporation counsel at this time. Uh hence, there appears to be a need uh for this type of service to be. Uh given. It would be great if the mayor would end up. Um appointing someone who it could be confirmed by the council. I certainly think that would be a great idea.
I'm glad M M R M A disagrees with you, as well as M M L, as well as three other separate attorneys. That say your interpretation fifteen point five in the charter is absolutely incorrect. And you have violated your your oath, sir.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I I'll get with uh both Mister Miyaki and Roger and I'll figure it out, just to save us some time, so we're not.
Thank you.
If you would want me to address it, I don't think it would take too much time. If you don't, then that's fine too.
You you want to do a council, you want to address it?
Uh. I'll get with Gary and make sure my understanding was correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I think what we need, we have, you know, we have two things. We need to get some kind of language to get it on the November ballot, because I don't think it needs to be on the primary ballot. For uh to get voter approval to. Create a charter review commission.
So so.
We gotta get that as soon as possible, get that language going like by next week or, you know, next week or something.
I think by uh by our July, uh sometime in July, maybe if not this uh. I think the first or second meeting in July, we need to have something that's adopting a resolution. So that or hearing something from the administration. Stating that we are going to have a a pretend on the ballot, a yes or no, because there's an election in November. There's a school board election in Dearborn Heights. And so you can ultimately use that same election and piggyback and not cost the residents anything. So we should have it on on there as a citywide election. I mean, the clerk and and her amazing staff are gonna already be taking on a an election. And we'll see what happens in November.
Council Chair.
And then if it gets passed. The following November, you'll be able to have, you'll be able to have an August primary if there's if there's not, if there's more than nine. And if there's not, you'll just have one in uh November.
Well, I think what we need to do is we need to get the the question if they wanted a charter.
I know, that's the first step. What I'm what I'm, I'm just walking to a quick time.
And I just, you know, I don't know if that has to be approved by the Attorney General or not. Prob- maybe not. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. But I mean, we gotta get that. And and first meeting in July. We don't want something said, okay, well, this is what we're looking into. We should have this language.
No, 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 no.
You know, I mean, it's gotta be. Or maybe you have someone else drafted up or something to make sure. I don't, I don't know. I mean.
Okay, if 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 we don't have something before, I don't know, maybe the end of this month, drafted, ready to go. We can reach out to special legal counsel. You can, I'll give you that permission.
And also um. Uh as far as a char- cha- charter amendment. If anyone thinks that there should be a charter amendment that needs to be on this November's ballot. They can contact us or one of the one of the council members. And I'm not sure if that has to go to the Attorney General.
I think that has to go to the Attorney General.
Just a charter.
Language, the language might have to go to the Attorney General, but again, I don't have that information. Um. Yeah, do you have an answer on that?
Yes, it would have to end up going over to the Attorney General.
I remember you saying that to us last time. Yes, November, so as uh. But not the yes or no, correct?
I'm sorry?
Not the yes or no, like if we put on the ballot to be on November, would you like a charter revision committee, commission? And and we had to give the first uh uh thing this November to say yes or no. We wouldn't need that.
Council Chair.
Yeah, that does, that does not need to go to the.
Chair, there's not two corporation councils.
I I'm asking, I'm not asking.
I know, but but he is. He's giving legal advice again and is not two corporation council.
We have zero, we have zero, not two, zero.
When, no, we do not have zero. Fifteen point five is interpreted incorrectly. And does not, and I'm reading even the assessor. Your 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 vote on the assessor was incorrect from from April of two thousand twenty two. But and then the one you made last April was incorrect. So I will, no problem. If you wanna have. Two corporation councils violate the charter, that's your your prerogative. Do that. I will object to it.
Thank you. Thank you. It's all being recorded, Roger.
I know, I know it is. Thank goodness.
Council Chair.
Council Chair. If I may suggest something. If Mister Farina has opinions from M M R M A, M M L and others. Direct him to produce those opinions. Saying that he is still the corporation counsel. Um under section five point one five, not fifteen point five of the city charter. And so that the city council can have the uh benefit of those opinions. If I'm wrong, I would be glad to advise the city council that I am wrong. But so far.
I will, I will give him an example, Council Chair.
No, we don't need an example, Mister.
I'm I'm gonna read a motion by Councilman Muscat, April nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
Roger, please. Roger, please. I'm I'm asking.
I know.
Nicely.
I I'm answering.
I know, no. If you have the proof from some M R M A.
We'll send you not just the proof, uh uh opinions from, I'm gonna send you, I'm gonna send you the vote. That you did to uh to for the assessor to be renewed on the five point one four of her contract. Not five point one five. I have that right here, which you can look.
I mean, I'm going to pump point of order.
So there is no expiration. And I would ask, when did, when was Gary Gary ever renewed?
Yeah.
This is city council. Anybody that interrupts? And be excused and asked to leave. Roger, unless you're asked to speak. Please respect the council in the meeting. If not.
I'm sorry.
Please do not interrupt. I'm going to the chair. If you wanna keep interrupting, there's a door to your left, there's a door to your right. Nobody's holding you here. You're a guest of this chamber. Stop interrupting when people are talking unless you're called up. Thank you, Roger.
Council Chair, this this.
Roger.
Can we can we adjourn the meeting?
Mister Roger, please. Councilman, thank you. I've asked this since January ninth respectfully. Hang on. I've asked him this since January ninth. I've walked him to the side. I've asked him during the meeting. I've asked him this since January ninth. I've walked him to the side. I've asked him during the meetings. I've contacted him. I've sent him an email. I've sent him a text. All approved. Roger, please stop doing this. Roger, please stop doing this.
Counselor Chair. Can we put a motion or a special session to remove somebody?
I mean. Really, I don't I don't think you need to go to that, but.
It's just it's just ridiculous. You're 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 bickering back and forth. It's this is official city business.
Counselor Chair, may I?
Roger, please, I ask. I don't wanna do the bickering back and forth.
I don't. I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna say.
Go ahead. Say what? I'm gonna give you thirty seconds.
Thank you. As an African American attorney, I am I am fed up with the disrespect. Of you picking, oh, not you yourself, but uh and and Mister Saab. Um, uh, putting a a white attorney that has no standing according to the charter.
That that is point of order.
Stop playing. Stop using the.
I'm sorry. Stop. You like it. Stop. Stop.
Roger, that's another.
I will.
Let me talk.
No, 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 no.
Come on, you're asking him to respect his people. You're respecting.
He he said to me by name.
I got it.
Please.
Hold full the race card. Uh, Haas.
Do not.
Haas.
Right now, I'm about to go meet people racing.
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order.
He's ridiculous.
Come on, Haas. Roger, please. I am, I'm gonna, I'll be damned if I let you guys take advantage of this chamber.
Right.
Number one. Number two, Roger, I'm sorry that you feel that way, but I don't think one person here has ever insinuated. Or even made you feel in a certain way because of race, color, ethnicity. Hang on, please don't interrupt me. As an Arab American to this community, as a minority to this community. You have no right to say that we're allowing a white man to speak and we're not allowing the black man to speak. This is this, this is twenty twenty four. There's no such thing as Jim Crow laws.
Goodness.
Please stop, Roger. That's the problem. You know what the problem is? The man that's that's up there that's speaking does not interrupt us. You feel entitled to feel like it's okay to interrupt us, and that's the problem we have. You're making it to be racist. I'm making it about disrespect. Stop disrespecting these chambers. That's really what's happening. So if you wanna use it in your lawsuit, please show this clip as well. Don't just show the part where you wanna claim as the victim. Really, what's happening is this chamber, the residents are the victim of what you and this administration has been doing.
Thank you, Counselor Chair. I just wanna put out there too for the record, I feel discriminated against by Roger and America, because I'm an Arab American.
Thank you.
And he's always disrespecting me at council meetings.
All right, guys. Is this meeting over?
Yes, I'd like to adjourn it.
You didn't mean.
I mean, I'd like to uh.
It's just a question. Hang on, Councilman. Any other council members have anything else?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman.
Just to summarize, so. We.
Thank you.
Are all in agreement, it sounds like, that. We wanna uh get the charter revised. Issue is exactly three things. Number one. You know, wh- what are we gonna put on? Number two, what's the timetable? Number three, what's the correct procedure to do it?
So I I will get with. The Attorney General's Office my myself. I'm gonna reach out to Mister uh Ajemi, who works there. Um, I'm gonna get some answers from him, because currently we don't have a Corporation Council. Uh, and not because of race, ethnicity, or anything. The council just didn't vote that person in. Um, so I will, I will, as the Counselor Chair, take the lead on that. I will get with Councilman Wensel. And I'm gonna make him help me out on this one. And we will get you guys some answers. I'm gonna end it here. Do you have any comments from the residents? I'm gonna give you two minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on, and then we'll go over to Zoom, and and then we're done with this meeting.
Thank you, Zohar Abla three five four Rosemary. You guys know I served on the council. I know every one of you. I know Roger. I know the mayor. We used to sit and break breads together with Roger, with the mayor, with every one of you. And. That the city needs you. Need both the administration and the council to work together. There is enough problems in the city. There is enough bickering. So please, respect each other. Respect the residents. And I really thank you for what you're doing, especially on the budget. And I want you to stand your ground on the budget, because it can be balanced by next meeting and approved. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? We have any on Zoom? Seeing none, uh, this meeting is complete.
Recording stopped.